Call the meeting in order.
Belsley?
Here.
Herr?
Here.
Herman?
Here.
Hoffman?
Here.
Newhouse?
Here.
Yarco?
Here.
You have a floor.
Thank you. Please join me in the pledge allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do not have any hearings tonight. We do have one presentation, and this presentation is the Morton Plaza video presentation. So, Mr. Brown, are you want to come up to the microphone? Take it with you if you need to.
I've been instructed to make sure we use the microphone, so we're ready to go. We're going to put it up on the screen, so if anybody needs to move, so they can see. We're going to let it play while I just briefly discuss what you're going to be seeing tonight. This is our first animation. As you've seen in the past, we've done some screenshots of the plaza as we've worked through this design. We've had great comments from the village, 500-plus running so far in our responses, and a lot of good things for us to consider as we move down the road. What we do, and this is what version of this that you'll be seeing at the Pumpkin Festival, we take this design, we're putting it in the third dimension, and we will have this as a looping video along with the plan that you've seen previous. We'll have a colored version of the plan there with all the labels on it as well. As you can see, we still have some work to do. There's still some landscape. We're working on colors and coordination of the different aspects of this, but we'll have that all done this week, the water jets. But the way that we will work this, it'll be about a three- or four-minute running presentation that will just loop on itself. It will basically do an aerial fly-around of the whole plaza. We'll have labels that'll actually hang there to describe what you're seeing, so that... We've gone back and forth about the narration, and we will produce a version with the narration, but we felt at the Pumpkin Festival, you may have people that are not sitting or paying that much attention, and with all the noise of the tent, it may be difficult to hear the narration. So, we're going to label this thing with flying labels, so that as we move around and bring attention to spots, there's a description of what you're looking at, and then we can work through that the entire time. But we will do sort of a two-pass fly-around. We'll do an overall, showing the overall park and how it sits into the downtown area, and then we'll come back to this slide right here, and right now it's going to zoom back out to a higher elevation. What we'll do is we will bring you down to eye level like a person, and we will actually walk you through the plaza as a person at eye level, so that you can see the various components in there in a little bit more detail and more close up. And we'll do that in such a way that as you walk to the components, the ones we want you to pay attention to, we'll actually stop the animation for a few seconds, so you can see that area, and then we'll pick it up and move it on down the road. So, again, it'll be probably a three-to-five-minute looping presentation for the entire time. We're in booth 32, as I recall, in the tent, so we'll be there all weekend. We have several people from our company, the Farnsworth Group. We will be there to help man the tent and answer questions. We will have response there if people want to write a comment and leave it for us to consider down the road. If they just want to talk about it, we'll be there to listen and hear their comments along the way. So, this begins to show that third dimension. We think that will make this a lot more understandable as we move forward with the overall presentation. We'll probably have three pieces in the display. We'll have this animation running on the screen in the middle. We'll have the plan view of the entire park that you've seen before, but more updated. And then I think we'll probably do a Google image, satellite image of the town, so people can better understand where this actually is in the downtown district if they've not seen it before. Do you have any questions? Ask away. We are here to answer.
First of all, I think we've been receiving a few comments.
Yes, we have.
That relate to, "There's too many things in here for a park." And I think some of the people who've been involved understand that this is not a park, it's a plaza. Would you mind explaining a little bit about the difference between a park and a plaza?
I sure will. As you know, Morton has a beautiful park system. I mean, we are second to nobody in central Illinois in terms of parks. Our parks tend to be open, beautiful, use-type spaces, and those are what we refer to as an Olmsted-style park, which Frederick Law Olmsted was the designer of Central Park, the first major park in the United States. And so, those types of styles have been imitated all around. In the '60s, as new as urbanism began to go back into the cities and looking at rebuilding cities, plazas sort of started to come to the forefront. And a plaza is a more high-use, active area that relates more to the architecture and the uses around it. So, if you read the downtown plan that you've developed over the last few years, you're moving the downtown district to a more urban, new urbanism word. You can use a lot of different buzzwords. And so, the plaza is really a reflection of where the entire use and architecture is downtown. If you go out on the internet, you can go to like PV Plaza in Minneapolis, there are several... You can just Google plazas, and you'll get several that come up. And the more prominent ones were in the '60s and '70s, and even those today, a lot of them, they're going back and redesigning them to make them even more interactive and more useful in today's world. So, we are going a different route than a traditional Olmsted open-space park. We're looking to satisfy a wide range of people with a multitude of uses at different age groups and throughout the year as well. So, for example, as you look through that, the plaza itself, as we've said from the very beginning, the water jets could be shut off. You could have the Memorial Day celebration up there. We could put the Christmas tree up in the plaza. We could shut the water off at lunch and have food carts up there. We have plenty of seating around the outside, but you could take the seating out, and you could have small events there and put tents and whatever, and still have people travel around within that space along the way. We have a couple play areas, and I think it's important to note that they're not playgrounds, they're play areas. And so, we're doing more interactive and thinking-type of playing, climbing, not so much running and jumping, although there's some of that. We have interactive music in that. But if we want to, you know, if they want a heavy play area, they can go right down the street to Jefferson, and we've got plenty of places to do that type of play. We're just introducing a more short-term type of play that, you know, is probably a shorter period of time for people to use along the way. So, ours is more diversified use, more seasonal use. We can break up the seasons along the way, and so we can go to a lot of different age groups and use people to use this space.
Okay. I know Mrs. Piles works very hard to get activities downtown.
Absolutely.
And I know that there have been a few people concerned that we're using up a lot of space that she will not be able to use in the future. Now, you mentioned that be able to take the tables and chairs out of the covered seating areas there, and what else are your thoughts?
I think we can adapt this space to the throw-down or any kind of type of event like that. We could sit... We could put tables and chairs and tents in the back where the entertainment areas would have, you know, more enclosed space if we needed. We could put people under the shaded seating areas if you wanted to have the vendors up in that area, and you could still have a big, wide walkway in front of the vendors in order to move around. We can shut the whole water feature off on the memorial, and you'd have that whole upper plaza to entertain people there as well. So, I think it's a large, multi-use space, and you could use all of the spaces, for example, for the throw-down and spread people out. We can easily sit, just to give you a size of scale, and I know there's also been discussion about the band shell at Idlewood and things like that.
That was going to be my next question. You want to speak to that?
I will speak to that. I haven't looked at all their final plans, but Idlewood is such a much bigger space than we have here. If we use... There's no set rule how many square feet a person uses when they're set to be entertained, but they typically range from about eight square feet to about 21 square feet. If we kind of land in the middle, we can easily sit about 250 to 300 people comfortably in this space. Obviously, we can't take on the kind of activities that would happen at Idlewood. This is a smaller venue that, you know, smaller groups could use, but it's not so big and overpowering like Idlewood would be. So, it's a very adaptive space. It doesn't have to be just entertainment. It could be like the Friday night that we were down there with the small group that was just putting on, you know, the small show. There could be kids coming in on the weekends that just want... The Drama Club wants just a small place to put on a show outside. It's a smaller venue, but we are not trying to be like Idlewood. We're a much smaller venue, and ours can be used for multiple purposes along the way.
Is the material grass in front of the back?
Yes. And I should probably...
Or the golf green?
It would be a mowed grass, and then behind it, the three circles you see would be terrace seating, so it's like a concrete curb, but it's grass behind it. So, you could bring your chairs down there and sit and have a relatively flat area to sit in, or you could sit right on the concrete curb. You could sit on the sidewalks around the side. But we will comfortably sit 250 to 300 people. We could jam more in there if we wanted to, but we don't need to.
I think there was, when you were down there and talking to the community members, I think there was a lady that came to you and asked you a question for one venue in there, if you want to...
Which venue was that?
Wedding.
Oh, wedding, absolutely. There was a lady that came up and asked... She was looking at the plan, you know, could that open entertainment stage area in the back be used for a wedding? Absolutely, it could be used for a wedding. And we have you on the backside of Main Street, so you're not backed up right to Main Street along the way. Everything through this park is all ADA accessible, so, you know, there's no issue pushing carts around. We've not shown lighting, but, you know, there'll be lighting as part of this park. It'll be an integral part of that. We'll have sound available. We'll leave panels in that building in the back, so, you know, you can have some lighting, some sound capability along the way. So, yeah, absolutely. There were... We had a lot of questions that night about some interesting topics, and I'd forgotten about that one.
The... I think a group came forward too and said something about concern about maintenance of this. How are you working to make sure that this can easily be maintained?
There will be maintenance. There's no doubt about that. I mean, I talked to Gary Watson who were at the Park District, and I think he's raised some very valid questions about that. What you'll see as you go toward the back of this, so we have like a dumpster location, you know, along the back along First Street. That's per Waste Management and their codes where they have to be. We want to make these sidewalks extra wide, so if you have staff in there moving garbage cans up and down throughout the day, there's plenty of space to do that. The biggest maintenance piece will be the water feature, and we don't want to make that really intricate use. That's why all the mechanicals for the water feature will be over in a building, completely locked and out of sight, out of mind. The water feature itself will be just simple jets, you know, embedded into the concrete with a grate system, so the water goes right back in and down below. So, we're not storing any water on the surface where people can get into it and mess with it. We're putting it all underground and pumping it back in at a later date. You could, depending on how much money you want to spend on the water feature, you know, you can get controls that basically will tell it what to do all day long, or we can self-program it along the way as well. So, we're trying to keep the space as wide open as possible. Garbage will probably be our biggest challenge to keep that in and out there, day in and day out. We'll make the restroom building sort of bulletproof, so Jeff can go in there and inspect it periodically like he and I've talked about, make sure it's all up to speed, and he can put a fire hose in there and just blow it out when it gets messed up.
Speaking of bulletproof, has there been some discussions about security as far as cameras and things similar?
There has not, and we're going to need to sit down and talk with the police at some point in time. Every one of these that we've been part of, at one point in time, you will add cameras here to be safe.
I was thinking, was it Chillicothe that you did something, and there were cameras, or were they reaping at it?
Yes, we designed a splash pad in a new playground set, a restroom building for the Chillicothe Park District. And about 10 days before we opened last spring, we had a prefabricated bridge... Excuse me, I'm losing my voice. We had a prefabricated bridge that the kids decided to come in in the evening and start to disassemble all the bolts out of it. So, after about a night of that, all of our railings were missing. They were working on the decking. And thankfully, the day before that started, we had, with the help of the Chillicothe Police Department, had put in two cameras that saw the whole park. And so, we photographed the actual young man that did that. So, the following Monday, the Police Department made a visit to school and hauled him out so everybody knew who he was and what had happened, and we have not had any issues since.
I've kind of taken over the question and answer proceedings here. How about some more from the board?
My questions have been asked, but mostly I wanted to just comment that the emails and comments that we've gotten from people have been really very constructive and positive, and that I know you have paid attention to them, addressed them to the best of your ability. But one of the key pieces was the difference between a plaza and a park.
Yes.
And I think that once people kind of get where we're going with the urban, multi-generational, multi-use concept, they understand that. And then the other thing that I really like, and you've covered it, but I just... Kudos to you for the adaptability and flexibility. We are already using that space, and so I think there was concern, not to be repetitive, but, you know, that people like what we've done so far there, and that we will be able to continue to do even more types of events and have the flexibility to add seating or, you know, put the Christmas tree there, turn the water off and on, things like that. So, I appreciate that that is all part of the design.
It's just not a good space unless we make it multifunctional, multi-use, adaptive to the changing seasons. I mean, look at the wonderful things happening in the village now. Think about five years from now, we don't even know, and hopefully we've created ourselves enough flexibility here that we can adapt to that down the road.
One thing I found interesting, at some point, you talked about the percent of green space that this has. It's far more than 50%, I believe, isn't it?
Yeah, I did some rough numbers, just paved versus non-paved area. I think it was 43% paved, and then the remainder is basically open, whether it's playground, grass, open space. So, it's... I was thinking it was more a 50/50 split, but it's really not quite there. So, we have a lot of open space.
So, a nice... Still a nice green space downtown.
Absolutely.
Even when we add the other features.
Yeah, I'm a landscape architect. I can't pave everything. It just goes against my nature.
Steve?
Mr. Brown, I think we talked about this once or twice before in here, but it might just be useful for folks who are watching on television. Just kind of recap, Farnsworth's a very professional, experienced organization. Maybe comment just a little bit on the company and your own experience with these kinds of projects. I know you're responsible for Morton Pool. I think you've connected with the zoo, the new zoo in Morton, or in Peoria.
I am in a former life, yes.
And just maybe a quick review, just so folks understand that this is a very highly professional organization.
Sure. Farnsworth Group is actually a 100-year-old firm. Our home corporate base is Bloomington, Illinois. I work in the Peoria office. We started as a survey firm. Today, we are a multi-disciplined, full-service. We offer architecture, all facets of engineering, landscape architecture. We actually have five landscape architects on our staff, which downstate, that's kind of unheard of to have at this point. We have worked on everything from the new libraries that have gone into Peoria here the last few years. That was one of our projects. I was fortunate in a former life, and somebody else over here in a former life too, with Clark Engineers. I was one of the project managers at the new Peoria Zoo, the Africa exhibit there. I've worked on O'Brien Field over the years. Worked in Chicago for a few years, in Minneapolis, so I got sort of well-rounded and then came home. I'm a Mackinac/Morton product as my childhood. I've been practicing landscape architecture for 30 years myself, and I manage five of us all together. We do, as Farnsworth Group, we do schools, we do healthcare centers, we do hospital work. We do a lot of community work. We were the architects of record for the new pool here in Morton a few years back, and we've done several pools and water features for other people along the way. If you want to see some of our really good, handy work right now, if you happen to be in Bloomington, drive down Veterans Pass State Farm. It looks like State Farm's corporate front yard looks like a bomb went off right now. We've designed all new underground garages, which then translated into all new electrical and lighting and duck banks and new landscaping. I won't say how much it's worth, because it's a lot, but we work for a lot of major clients. On average, we're about a $35 million a year company, and that's what we do. We're also a huge municipal group. We service about 100 municipalities throughout central Illinois' municipal engineers.
Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any other questions?
The visual's great. It helps a lot.
Yeah, it's wonderful. Would you just talk a little bit about how this will be phases possibly, and that there's flexibility in the design as circumstances may change?
Absolutely. There are very few projects in this day and age that go straight from paper, completely installed. I mean, we just don't live in that day and age today. This one, as we move through this for funding purposes and all that, we have specifically broke this up, so we could do the front half to begin with, or we could do the playgrounds, or we could leave the entertainment amphitheaters piece out and just put that in grass right now. That could be a future part down the road. We can build this in various pieces, and that's one of the reasons we have the buildings the way they are, so the infrastructure that's needed, we can bring that into the site, leave it kind of off to the side, out of our way, so we're not doubling up on work at a later date. So, this can easily be built in two or three phases, if that's the route that it needs to go.
Thank you.
We are going to make an effort during the Pumpkin Festival to reach out to some of our very selected officials and get them to try to look at this. We'd love to get some letters of support from them. I doubt that any of them have any money to offer you, but we can ask. But we would love to see some letters of support, so that when the village does go for an AusLID grant next year with the DNR, we can show them, you know, the veterans are behind us, the cities, the villages behind us, our elected officials have seen this and have offered support as well.
When you say elected officials, I presume you mean state and federal?
Yes. I know you guys are already on board. I'm not worried about you guys. Not yet, anyway.
Well, I think with the 500 or so comments that you've had, and I believe the earlier survey had about 400 or so responses, we're assuming that those are all from different folks. That's something like 1,000 pieces of input. We'd all like to see more. This needs to be Morton's plaza.
Absolutely.
The whole communities. Take it as a good sign that we've had the kind of response that we've had. I think Pumpkin Festival will be a great opportunity for that, and I would encourage everybody who goes to the Pumpkin Festival who's a Morton resident to stop, see this, pay some attention to it, and cast your vote. We want to hear what you think.
We will... I'll be there, a large share of the festival at booth 32. We'll have some other folks from Farnsworth there. We will try to answer your questions. If we can't answer them, we'll find the answers and get back to people. I was in a management meeting the other day, told them we'd had upwards of 800 or 900 responses across the board, and, you know, we're typically accustomed to getting 20 or 30. So, I mean, it just shows you how involved our community really can be, and that's a great thing. I mean, I have a whole set on my desk, highlighted, you know, the different versions of things to pay attention. If you really back up and kind of look at it conceptually, our people have asked a lot of very good questions to challenge us. I wish I could get more communities to do that.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any other questions? All right, well, we'll see you at the festival.
There is one other thing that there have been some questions about, and that is, is the most veterans' memorials are very solemn places. Mr. Brown has been very involved with the veterans in the community, and we have a letter here from Larry Steinling, the Morton Veterans Memorial Committee. Letter says, "There's been question on the location of Morton Veterans Memorial and its proximity to a water feature and play area in downtown Plaza. In response to these questions, I would like to give you the thinking of the veterans involved in the design process. Morton Veterans Memorial Committee met with Bruce Brown and Jennifer Daly on August 2nd, 2012. The veterans at the meeting stated they had no problem with the design as presented. The general membership of the Morton American Legion Post 318 met with Mr. Brown and Ms. Daly on the 16th of August. Again, there was no objection to the plans as presented by the veterans active in our community. In fact, the sentiment was the veterans are happy with the water feature and the memorial being in close proximity. A parent can take the kid to the plaza to play in the water or on the play equipment and then go to the memorial and explain the sacrifices made by our military. The proposed design of the memorial allows for components that are of educational value as well as remembrance." It is with these thoughts that I can say that downtown Plaza has the backing of the Morton Memorial Committee and members of the American Legion Post 318. Now, also, besides the American Legion, we also have another veterans' organization, and I think, Bruce, you are going... You have or are trying to be involved, or were they involved in this committee also?
I'll get up here so I don't get in trouble. Yes, we've spoken with them. We're going to make a formal presentation to their entire group at some point, not too far down the road, but they've also chimed in that they like this idea as well.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Very informative. Thank you very much. Under public comments tonight, does anyone have any public comments? Hearing none, we'll move to request for removal of items from the consent agenda by the public. Consent agenda denied is approval of minutes of the regular meeting of August 20, 2012. Approval of bills, no ordinances, no resolutions, and under other business, approval for the use of Billy Drydaway for a crop walk to be held on October 7th, 2012. And the second item is approval of Morton Tourism Request for Assistance from the Downtown Oktoberfest on October 6th, 2012. Are there any items on the consent agenda that the public would like to move down to action item 8, consideration of items removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none, are there any items the board would like to move down? In case, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Belsley?
Yes.
Herr?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Newhouse?
Yes.
Yarco?
Yes.
Under Village President's items, we have an ordinance number 12-13, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of real estate. The resolution basically states that the President of Board of Trustees is authorized to execute an agreement to purchase 200 South First Street, Morton, Illinois, from the estate of Raymond H. Mason and the terms and conditions of the agreement to purchase presented at this meeting. If I remember right, the amount that we have offered and has been agreed upon was $157,500. This money will be taken from the Tourism Fund. It is our intent to move Mrs. Piles down to the downtown area, so that she can be very close to this plaza, very close to the barbecue activities, the Oktoberfest, and many other things. Also, it will be kind of a staging ground for our livery police when we do have those activities, that they'll have a place to stage off of. In addition to that, there is a renter in this building, and so we will be continuing to rent that. And once we have determined what all uses that Mrs. Pile needs, if there are more, if there's extra space, then we will also probably rent the extra space. It's our intent to, as much as possible, break even on this. It's our intent to, as much as possible, break even on, on this, on this property through rental, and then, of course, the, the original reason is to have our tourism director close to most of the activities in the community. With that, I recommend approval of the ordinance 12-13.
So moved, Your Honor?
Second.
We have two seconds.
Your pick.
Any discussion? Your Honor, I think this might be a good time to address questions that's been raised with me a time or two by, by citizens who are concerned about the extent to which we appear to remove property from the public tax rolls and make it municipal property and lose that tax revenue. So I did a little research working with Mrs. Farrell, and it's interesting to find out that while we have in some cases, either through municipal acquisition of property or through tax rebate, have taken off the rolls or reduced the amount for land that produces maybe a few hundred dollars a year in tax revenue, or in some cases, a couple of thousand dollars a year, we have actually replaced it through our other development work with land that produces several thousand dollars a year, and in some cases, potentially tens of thousand dollars a year. And I thought people might be interested to know that if you look at 2008 and 2012, the net increase is nearly a million dollars. And if you back out the business district tax from that, which is not part of people's properties, property tax, and you make an adjustment of a percent or so or two for the automatic escalator and the county tax, the tax arrangement that, that causes the, the tax, oh, its cap to rise slightly each year, that still leaves something like, maybe between 400 and 5,000, 400,000 and 500,000 dollars, approaching a half million dollars a year in new revenue from new businesses. It's not increases in taxes that people are already paying, this is new revenue, people coming into the community, particularly businesses, where the return is higher than in previous property. So while we are acquiring a piece of property that will potentially remove the building from the tax rolls, the net effect of the property exchanges we've made has been substantially to the good of the community. Also, in addition to that, while I'm thinking about it, if we do rent this facility or parts of this facility, the village does have to pay real estate taxes on part, on the property. So those funds will still be coming back to the various taxing bodies. Well, I thought folks would like to know that we are paying attention to the revenue difference. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Farrell, for getting that together for me. All right, any other discussion? Roll call.
Herr?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Kaufman?
Yes.
Newhouse?
Yes.
Yarko?
Yes.
Belsley?
Yes.
Does the clerk have anything to add?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. Madam Treasurer?
Tonight, I'm asking approval to transfer $44,000 from the Water and Wastewater Depreciation Fund to the Capital Projects Fund.
So moved.
Madam, let me say, I gotta do some, I can't vote, I don't think.
Chef's on a roll.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Herman?
Yes.
Kaufman?
Yes.
Yarko? Yes.
Belsley?
Yes.
Herr?
Yes.
Motion passed. Chief?
Nothing.
Chief?
Two informational items that weren't on the agenda, real quickly. The first is a reminder, for those that maybe haven't even caught it, that our, our department is able to accept a limited amount of medical waste, and specifically needles, the medical needles that, that may have been used, and we accept those during regular business hours at our, our main department station on, at 300 Cortlandt Street. So that is one of the things that's, that's now available to citizens, if they can bring them out and safely dispose of them. Those are things that wouldn't normally go into your garbage can, or couldn't safely go into your garbage can. So, and we're happy to answer any questions about what may or may not be acceptable. The other thing I brought tonight was our, the newest in our arsenal of, of medical devices. You, you may remember that during our discussions with the, with the budget time, we budgeted to replace one of the three heart monitors that, that we have on our, on our ambulances. I'm happy to report that because of a, a regional grant that we were involved in, we're actually able to take that money and replace all three of those monitors, as well as get some additional equipment. So that grant altogether is for about $100,000 worth of equipment. This, this, as you see it today, is about $30,000 worth of a device. This replaces a device that was about 10 years old, that looked very similar, but kind of did things differently. And I, I was trying to count out and go through the, I was going to tell you about all the things that it does, but there's about 15 things that, that it does now, and so it, it's really a very complex device. Three or four of those things are, are measurements that we didn't even have available to us with carbon monoxide and CO2 and oxygen and, and all those types of things. In addition to that, it takes all that information and, and sends it over the wireless network to the hospitals, and even forwards it on, in many cases, to a cardiologist's smartphone or PDA. So in some cases, if they're on call, they could even sit at home and, and read that, that diagnostic level of EKG. So, but I'm happy to show you some of the other features earlier, without the shocking part, I won't show you that. But, but otherwise, you know, we'll, I, I wanted to bring that to your attention, and we're really pleased to have been able to secure that grant, so.
Good work.
Thanks.
Totally, totally portable.
We don't need that.
Very good. Thanks for getting the grant, sir. I know you're always on the lookout for.
We are always on the lookout for grants, so I think in our time, my time as chief, we've secured just over a million dollars worth of grants, so we're, I'm pretty proud of that.
Great. I'm not counting the fire truck.
No, that counts, the fire truck.
Oh, okay. I thought you were doing a million without it.
No, I have to count that one in there.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Mr. Luttermann?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
And trustees tonight, Mr. Belsley?
Nothing this evening.
Mr. Herr?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Mrs. Herman?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Mr. Kaufman?
Just one item. We noticed in the paper that there's a hazardous waste pickup. The state has a few of them, and they've established one for 2012, one-day collections from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM on Saturday, September 8th, at Peoria Exposition Gardens, at 1601 Northmore Road. And some of the items citizens can take, and this is from Morton, Peoria, and surrounding areas, paint, paint thinners, chemical cleaners, pharmaceuticals, mercury, mercury-containing items, antifreeze, mortar oil, kerosene weed killer, pesticides, adhesives, batteries, fluorescents, all kinds of items that you can't put in the garbage and you can't put in the landfill. So if any citizen has any of that, they might want to participate in that collection, September 8th, at Exposition Gardens. It's a one-day event from 8:00 in the morning till 3:00 PM. That's all I had, Your Honor.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Newhouse?
Three items tonight, Your Honor. The first one, if you look in your packet, is ordinance number 1212. This is a provision related to the planned mixed-use zoning in what's generally regarded as the old Morton area, defined by map. And it essentially makes it possible for people who buy, say, an old house, to have a business below residential property adjacent or above as part of the unit. And this allows people with a single unit to be able to do that without a special use. Multiple units still would follow the ordinance as it stands or as it stood, but this will make it easier for people who make the investment in the downtown community, want to have a place of business where they might live, or perhaps have, have a renter, and fit in with the mixed-use objective of the downtown development plan and the comprehensive plan input that we had on the, on the subject. It is unanimously recommended by the Plan Commission, recommend approval.
I have a motion.
So moved?
Second.
Two of them due enough tonight. Any discussion?
I guess I just would like to confirm that Chief Kelly, we talked at one time about, in a business district, that the fire department would know that there are residences there and all this and that, and that is all in your computer, or you would be aware of that possibility, and?
We have the capability of doing that. We don't necessarily currently have a process by which we would be officially notified of that, but if we were notified, then yes, that could go into our computer system, and, and we would be aware of it.
So as these properties hopefully will begin to do this, we could maybe get that information so that if there is a 911 call, we would know, like after hours, that there would still likely be people there.
As well as with, through our fire prevention program, because now you're associating it with a business, which is kind of our target areas to concentrate on, that would be something that our fire prevention officer might, and probably would be able to pick up on, and again, bring that information back and note that in our response records.
This is, this is one small step towards where we, we hope to go, and it was a considered opinion among all, all the people who are involved in it, that rather than trying to make wholesale changes, that we try to be smart and avoid the laws of unintended consequences and identify these things sort of one step at a time. So I would expect over a couple of years, we would have some other iterations of this ordinance that would, that would make it easier to manage and assure that the right kind of notification takes place with the fire department and whomever else needs to know.
Any others? Roll call.
Okay, oh, roll call, yes.
Kaufman?
Yes.
Newhouse?
Yes.
Yarko?
Yes.
Belsley?
Yes.
Herr?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Okay, if you look at the special use permit for a family video, there's a map there, a diagram, the Fuentes family is opening a Mexican restaurant called Hacienda Fuentes, has applied for a beer garden in the front. It's worth noting probably that these kinds of approvals require two things. They require liquor license approval, and they require Plan Commission recommendation for the use associated with the land. In this case, the Plan Commission has approved, recommended approval of, of the use. The facility itself, the space involved, is fully in compliance with the liquor commission requirements and under the supervision of the zoning officer and the police department and its execution to assure compliance. Hours, the materials, other kinds of things related to the construction and the, and the operation of the facility are specified by the, by the liquor license. So what we're doing tonight is approving the use with the understanding that the facility is fully in compliance with the liquor ordinance. So moved.
Second. Discussion?
Just that we have no zoning what that fence can be out of, or, I've just seen in other communities that some people just put up a stockade fence and call it good enough, and I was wondering if we shouldn't look at, I don't want to run them out of business or spend too much, but I want something more than just a four or five-foot-high stockade fence.
Well, it's designated by the liquor ordinance, so there's a, there's a height limitation or height requirement, and a requirement on spacing that eliminates the possibility of pass-through, you know, somebody can't hand a can of beer through the fence to somebody on the outside. If you look at schooners, that's one design, that cement block up to a certain height and then screened material above, there are different ways of meeting the requirement, but in, in every case, the liquor ordinance says you must have a fence that meets XYZ definition, and this one does.
The, there can be some temporary fencing when it is a short period of time, for example, during the Pumpkin Festival?
I just don't want to just see stockade fence with no landscaping, no nothing. I've seen that in other communities, so I think we ought to look at it, see what other, to soften, soften the effect.
You drumming up masonry business here?
No, it can be done in all different ways, you know.
It's, it might also be worth noticing, noting that the property is screened to the south with landscaping, separated from the residential area. The property immediately adjacent to the north is commercial. The property immediately across the street to the west is, is commercial.
Anything else? Roll call.
Newhouse?
Yes.
Yarko?
Yes.
Belsley?
Yes.
Herr?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Kaufman?
Yes.
Last item, if you look at your packet, you will find a special use request and a recommendation for approval by the Plan Commission for the Kroger property, 845 West Jackson. I draw your attention to the map, the drawing in the last sheet, and you will see that there is planned gas station operation, which basically responds to Kroger business model and the, the discount coupons for gasoline, reward coupons that shoppers, or reward points that shoppers receive from their purchases. The layout actually is complementary to the total space available. It helps resolve one issue, which is, which I believe has attracted the attention of a number of folks, and that's the wrong-way traffic in the last lane at, at the end of the Kroger lot on the east side. And although it goes hand in glove with a variance approval, also from last Monday night, in which the setback was allowed to be two feet. Normally, that would not be recommended by the village and probably not granted by the, the Zoning Board of Appeals, but in this case, it is adjacent to additional property to be developed by the same owner, deemed to be acceptable, there's precedent for it, and so this makes a good fit, and I therefore recommend approval. So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Steve, just a point of clarification, on the plat that we have, that we got a part of our packet, there's a hash line that would be on the east side of the property, according to the north arrow. It looks like a, a property line?
Yes.
I'm just asking, is that for reference? Is that an actual property line? Do you know?
That is, I think, for reference, that's where the space subject to the special use intersects with the adjacent property, which is all part of the, of the shopping center land.
So, so the dark line that outlines or references the service station is not a property line, is it? Because it's a planned unit development? Or is that an actual property line, I guess?
Well, the, the property belongs to the developer and/or the owner, depending on the, the arrangement, but I think it's all leased, so this would be, I think this simply defines the, the area that would be developed into the, into the, into the gas station.
I, okay, I was going to say, I wasn't familiar if there is a parcel there, and if it is, I didn't want us creating a future problem or situation with, with the neighboring property, with that line being a property line, if it's, if it's that, if that's the case.
Good question, and that was examined in the Zoning Board of Appeals hearing, and we determined that based on the development plans of the property owner, that that was not a potential conflict.
And so what happens to that one-way street that everyone goes the wrong way down?
Part of the, part of the
It's right here.
Gas station complex, yeah.
Is that the area that they were, in the Plan Commission minutes, that talked about maintaining two-way traffic?
Yeah.
Is that where they're talking about in that last row of parking there, where it's kind of backwards?
Yeah, it'll be, yeah. The character of the, of the pavement or the, the usage there will change completely, and I think the problem will go away.
But actually...
They've, yes, they've done the math, and it fits, and it was, as I say, it was very carefully examined, and, uh, so the real issue here is, I mean, the, the variance is subject solely to the approval of zoning board of appeals, so what we're talking about here is the, uh, zoning and, and use of the property.
Mr. Loudermilk?
Please know this still has to go through site plan review.
Yeah.
So a lot of those issues, stormwater detention, there's still a lot of unique issues with this site that'll have to be addressed at that time.
Yeah, all, all of these commercial properties, when we approve them, they are still subject to site plan review, so there are always some variables in the, in the subject.
It'll be a nice addition to that area to have.
In, in case anybody asks, you re- you made me think of something. Uh, in times past, when development discussion came up about that property, there was a concern about light spillage, the residential property adjacent. Uh, my understanding is the new types of lamps, which I believe will be LED, uh, are designed to, uh, shed light in such a way that is, as the light approaches the property line, it's down to about, uh, one or one and a half, uh, foot candles, which I think is within the, uh, accepted, uh, level. And again, that would be subject to site plan review with Mr. Loudermilk.
Thank you.
Any other question? Roll call.
Yarco?
Yes.
Belsley?
Yes.
Herr?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Kaufman?
Yes.
Newhouse? Yes.
Yarco?
Yes.
And there'll be no action afterwards. Thank you.[1659.63]